Seven o'clock, good evening. We'll call the city council meeting to order for January 21st, 2013. If you stand with me through the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'm corrected, it says 2014. Fire history. Roll call please.
Senior member.
Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Haug.
Here.
Councilmember Altough.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
And Mayor Hages.
Here, thank you. Item two is the agenda, course, any additions or corrections?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh darn. Yes.
Then the approval of the minutes of our previous meetings, January 6th, 2014. Regular minutes, are there any? Any additions or corrections?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 6th, 2014.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our January 6th meeting. All in favor? Yes. Very good. Also circulated was the closed session minutes of that same day, January 6th. Any additions, corrections?
I move that we approve the minutes of the closed session of January 6th as well.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of January 6th closed session. All in favor? Yes. And approval of the accounts payable. Item four, again, any questions or concerns about any bills that were posted?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable. For this we need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Haug.
Yes.
Councilmember Altough.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hages.
Yes. Thank you. Item five is citizen comments for any item that does not appear in the agenda, so if you'd like to address the city council, we agree the time to do that, we just ask that you state your name and address for our record and limit your comments to about five minutes.
Tony Ellison, 407 North Division. I'd like to comment on the last session's Barbara's Voice proclamation manifesto. If she wants to read that stuff out, she needs to come up here and do it herself, like everybody else has to, or send an associate of hers, or whatever. But to send a letter to you and expect you guys to read that out is inappropriate. Thanks.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else? Seeing none, then we'll close. Item five, citizen comments, and move on to old business and our strategic plan update.
Well, I made a huge leap, and if you're gonna tell me that you did it going a different direction, then you can tell me that right now. But we upped. I'll take you back, actually, about twenty and a half years ago, when I first started, we were having some discussions, we had this old business item. I converted that to a council projects report. Since that time, we spent a lot of time working on a strategic plan, and really those are things that would be contained within a strategic plan. And so my hope was to convert this to a regular strategic plan update that would be presented at your council meeting, every council meeting. And I will just update you on those items that we're making progress on that are part of the strategic plan. So one issue is just the report format, and if you're okay with the report format. The other one will really be the topic of our workshop on Monday, and this is kind of a preview to that. We've been working with the leadership team, supervisors, and putting together some recommended goals for this year. And so that's what you have in front of you, the report then being based on that. But at our workshop on Monday, our hope is to talk about these recommended goals, and then have you adjust them as you see fit, add some track delete, and then at some point adopt the goals for 2014, and then we will be off and running in a very strategic way. So what you have in front of you is sort of the beginning of a report, plus the goals. Also, there's several pages on accomplishments, and we've all been working together to make sure that we've listed those things, and they're in draft form right now, but that'll be finalized as a part of the report for you. And certainly, as you're looking through those, if you have one of those, hey, what about this, you know, is that on there? Let us know, is us know if there's something else that we need to add to it. But as you look at what we've done throughout 2013, we've really sort of united our efforts to accomplish a lot of great things. And it's pretty cool when you look back. We are certainly the big ones, you know, Riverwalk Project and that kind of stuff, but even smaller things here and there that we've done. And we've done it in a, just in a very united effort. And so that's what's reflected there. And then the last few pages are what I call the laundry list. That's the laundry list of things that we had in a session, in even a couple of sessions, we just threw everything up on the board, all the way up to, I think, black and white police cars, which maybe we can cross out the list now. But that'll be an ongoing thing, as new things come up, we'll add it to the laundry list, and every year we'll book the laundry list, and say, okay, what means to rise to the top this year. So that is all included in your packet. I guess what I'm looking for an answer on is are you okay with the concept of, instead of pending council projects, this becomes a strategic plan update?
I like that. And then you'll have our goals set, and then what the progress has made, just like project report.
Mm-hmm.
And will the 2013 accomplishments be on our website, so the citizens can read all that?
Yes.
I think it's something we need to promote as well. People say, what do you do for us? There's several pages of things that we've accomplished, so.
I'm envisioning that once you adopt goals for 2014, we'll take those goals. We'll also go through the exercise that we did last year, remember how we did the, are we making progress, or not making progress, or just stayed at the same level? We'll do that, we'll include that, we'll put together a new strategic plan report with new goals of 2013 accomplishments, and yes, that whole thing will go on your site.
Awesome.
And a Facebook page. Or we'll make mention of it on the Facebook page.
I like it.
Okay, well, build this more next week as far as getting into the.
Much more guests on Monday.
But great concept. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Move on then to item number seven. We've got two items. The first is, I think, the best. That is the presentation about our museum, and be welcome, Lisa Flank. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm here tonight instead of Pat Alter, our museum director, she unfortunately has the flu, so she won't be here. I'm the vice president of the museum board, so I'll be filling in and hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have. We've brought along an annual report that Pat's put together that gives you an in-depth overview of what we've done at the museum this year. And I'm here tonight just to give you a couple of highlights and a peek into what we're going to be doing in 2014 as well. We had a big year this past year. In 2013, we served over 25,000 people, citizens and visitors to Lowell alike. So for a museum our size, that's pretty impressive. We were aided in that effort by our amazing volunteer crew, who put in over 3,500 volunteer hours in the past year alone. They really help us operate every facet of the museum, so we are very grateful to all of our volunteers. One of the main functions of the museum is to collect and preserve the history of Lowell, and this past year we added 592 artifacts to our collection, which is quite an impressive number, really. And that's everything from large pieces of clothing down to photographs, so it runs the whole gamut of artifacts. We took on a new large project this year. We have taken on a four-year project of installing interpretive boards throughout the historic district in Lowell that cover different topics in our community's past. These are boards that are professionally done and are out on display for citizens 24 hours a day, year-round, so they really offer a chance for people to get engaged with our community history. The ones we installed this year were all along the Riverwalk, and they included an introductory board on our Native American history, our fur trade history, our lumbering history, and our early settlers. And this next year we'll be installing four additional boards, which will go along Main Street, and then we'll have two more additional years of adding those, so we're really excited about that project. We've had a number of children's programs happen this year, our education in the schools, and the programs that we bring the children into the museums for has continued to grow. One really exciting program that we do every five years happened this summer, it was called a River of Time Pageant. And students start in February and work with our education director to put on a pageant of the history of the settlement of the Lowell area. They are in costume, they create their own costumes, they're doing this pageant down right by the fairgrounds in the river. It's really a magnificent program. If you haven't seen it, we have it on tape, it's worth seeing. We've been involved in a lot of community events and continue doing the things that museums do. We've inventoried our collection this year and computerized it, which helps us to better manage it. So we really have been pleased to be a part of the community this year, and feel like we've branched out. In 2014, we have a couple of new exciting things coming in addition to the interpretive boards. We're gonna be creating a new website, so people can access us and our collection and our services better. We're gonna be creating new education and public programs, and looking for other ways to engage the community and market ourselves better to get people in our doors. So we thank you all for supporting us, we're happy to be here and doing what we're doing. And I have these reports to hand out to, but if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Pat, please.
Of course, Lisa.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. Shall I leave these on the table, or?
You can have them. They're in the office.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Maybe one comment that I'll throw out there, because Lisa will promote herself, but she really has been a tremendous board member, tremendous volunteer at the museum. There's projects that were done there because of her expertise that were done that maybe couldn't have been done without her expertise. So I've kind of heard that from Pat, and I thought maybe I'd publicly embarrass you and pass that along. Yeah, but no, seriously, and Lisa does live in the city of Lowell, and also was just a great volunteer and important member at the museum, so.
Well, thank you, we have a great group of volunteers, we're doing, so we're always looking for new volunteers, too.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Moving on to item B, the striking of delinquent taxes.
I can do it. As you know, we have two different types of taxes in the city of Lowell, we have real property and then we have personal property. And the real property, ultimately, we get paid off from the county at the end of the tax season. The personal property I am required to collect, and I'm seeking approval to strike 165.78 off the city rule for 2008 for these two tax, these two businesses on the exhibit A that I was unable to collect that particular year. I'll be also seeking permission from all the other taxing jurisdictions, too.
Most unfortunate things, but this year is not so bad.
I move that we approve striking 165.78 from the personal property tax rules.
No, it's seconded.
Been moved and seconded to strike the delinquent taxes of 2008. All in favor?
Yes.
Any close? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Item eight is monthly reports, which are included here, and I don't know if others got a copy of this, but I'll circulate it. Mark Mutt shared with me a magazine here from his particular vocation, and it highlights a couple of things that are involved with the city of Lowell and the fine work that Mark in particular does, twitting his own horn, but you've got a horn that good, it needs to be twitted. Thank you, Mark, for all of your work, and it certainly is noteworthy. And we've done some wonderful things at the water treatment plant down there, so thank you. The other reports are there included, too. Any questions or concerns about the reports of last month? Seeing none, then we'll move on to council comments, and we'll begin with Altough.
I went to the airport board, I was a little late. They were just about done, but they've got some real good plans going on. They got some water problems out there that they have to address, and they've got maybe some more renters out there to help them with the rent, and it's looking pretty good. I think they're doing a really good job out there. That is the only meeting that I made it to. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Schwab.
I have nothing to report from the fire authority, as I wasn't in attendance. The only thing that I would say is, as I see the news, see what's going on around the world, I pray for safety and peace in our community as schools and homes continue to deal with violence, so hopefully we can work together and not have those incidents here or in surrounding areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Haug.
The planning commission had one of those rare occasions where we didn't come up with a forum, so we didn't have a meeting, but we had informal discussions and actually learned some things about other people. In the LARA meeting, can't say as we accomplished a lot, but I think one of the important things is, was discussed as how important to a community the planning commission is, and the kinds of projects that we look at. And we're always looking for people that want to volunteer on the planning commission, so I'll leave you with that. We're looking for people that are interested in the community that would like to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Airbrush, Allison.
I did not make the ARRA board, but they also did not have enough members for a forum, must have been the MadRou since last month, so I have no updates and no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Light Power Board did meet, and things are going well there. We have, I guess, a groundbreaking schedule for the biodigester for Thursday morning, February 20th at 9:00 a.m., and so we're looking forward to that, if I'm correct, and that's been changed several times, but I think this one's gonna really stick. Later that same evening, the Chamber of Commerce will have their annual banquet, and various, at the board of directors meeting last week, various award recipients were discussed, and Supreme Ture for me to make any announcements. We'll let Liz and the fine people at the chamber do that, but there are some outstanding businesses that have been very involved in our community this last year, and I'm looking forward to honoring those, as well as the undisclosed-as-yet Person of the Year. And the expo for Lowell is scheduled for Saturday, March 22nd, so we're looking forward to that, too. The chamber also, it was their first meeting with their new slate of officers, Betsy Davidson is the president, the vice president is Klev Genkovich, and the treasurer Kurt Lardy, and the secretary who keeps things going rolling along is Liz Baker. So we certainly want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for making Lowell the great place that it is, they say the next place to be, I say it's the best place to be. And with that, we'll move on to the management's report. Mr. Haug.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm gonna skip around a little bit on my written report, but then I've got a couple of other short presentations by other people that I've invited. I'm gonna start with number three. During the most recent round, we applied to the Lowell Community Fund for the Civil War Memorial Site restoration, public building wireless connection, and handicap accessibility at Creekside Park, the Creekside Park that came out of the discussion with parks. Public Building Wireless is a project that, and I wanted to do this one before I did number one, so I can sort of tie everything together. What we're trying to do is, we're working with Adorial Technologies and Core Highcom to try to create a wireless network to tie all of the city buildings together. Our hope is then to be able to save some costs and eliminate dedicated internet connections and that kind of stuff. And then in the long term, once we build that foundation, we're talking long term, but that could set us up for maybe combining phone systems and maybe saving a little bit of our home business as well, and maybe even looking at voiceover internet protocol. But this would, what this would do is, it would start to put that framework in place. What would happen is the buildings, the treatment plant and the DPW building would shoot to the wastewater treatment plant, and then the waste, from wastewater treatment plant, we would shoot up to the Shepherd Street Tower, because there's a line of sight there, and then from that tower, we would connect on City Hall. And then we have a very robust internet connection here, and then file servers and all that. So that's, that's the plan. With Shepherd Street, we're finding out that one of our tower renters has maybe a little bit more equipment on that tower than we thought that they were going to have, and so we're gonna start having a discussion with them about that. But also, long term, we'd really like to be able to remove the tower that we have downtown and relocate the paging equipment that's on there up to Shepherd Street. We're also talking with Lowell Area Schools, they've got a project that they're working on that would involve a MOPAN FM station for the Lowell area. And they've identified that Shepherd site as the best site for them. So now we're having some discussion about whether or not we would need to upgrade that tower to some one that's a little bit more robust, that would be able to handle more equipment, or perhaps just put a second tower next to the one that's up there. I think that that's what our consultant is gonna be recommending, is that we just look at that second tower. So we've been having a lot of discussion about that, Chief Duke and myself, and Dan, and several others are sort of involved in it, and eventually we'll seek grant funds to try to do that project. We're also currently putting our plans together for city grants to LCTV. I, what we do really is gonna be based on a discussion that we have next Monday, and what you set for goals, and then we'll sort of tailor our grant requests to what you set for goals. I've got some ideas, I'll throw them out there as well, I'll talk about those at the workshop. And then the one thing that I did want to spend a couple minutes talking with you about is, and I gave you some attachments, EVIP is the new state revenue share. We receive it three times a year, and we have to meet certain requirements for each of the three phases of the EVIP program. The second phase, I think it's the middle one, consolidation plan, is this plan for continued cooperation and collaboration. And you'll see the page from the Department of Treasury website, one of the requirements is that we include one or more new proposals to increase the existing level of cooperation, collaboration, et cetera, or a detailed explanation of why increasing the existing level of cooperation, collaboration, consolidation is not feasible. I go back to this idea that we worked with the townships and Lowell Area Schools and the chamber, and we've created this community vision, and now we are involved in discussions about how can we move forward and what opportunities are there for cooperation as we move forward. To me, that whole concept puts us light-years ahead of many other communities, because we actually have the school districts and the local units of government talking and having great conversations, very positive conversations, and that's gonna lead towards something. To put down another new proposal this year, and maybe even next year, seems a little bit disingenuous. We could walk through the process and put something down and try it out, and you know, have it not work, or we could focus our efforts on the community vision and talk about that. And I just, I'm toying around with the idea of doing that and basically saying in our report to Treasury, we really want to focus our efforts, not on, something new will come up at some point in time, but to just put something down on paper seems a little disingenuous, and let us focus our efforts on this community vision project. We'll continue to report on it every year, but let us focus our efforts on that. So those are my thoughts, and I guess I want to get your reaction to me.
Look to the other side, I kind of couldn't have the inside scoop because of being involved with our whole vision group and the efforts there, and Mark's right, we've come a long way and things are going well. Have the council have opportunity to engage in some conversation here if we choose.
I think you're, I think you're going in the right direction, the way you are. I actually do, so I would agree 100% to what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm also on a, excuse me. I think one thing that we could emphasize is trails, because that does involve schools and that does involve the townships and everybody that's living and walking in the Lowell area. I think it's great to have trails, and very much inappropriate, your approach.
That's a great observation. We, you know, we have mentioned LARA because we had to put together previous service consolidations, and we've mentioned LARA before, but we haven't mentioned the specific task that we're working on now, which is to create the.
And the accomplishments we've already made, too.
Yeah. I suppose a fallback, I'm gonna have a conversation with Treasury, I want to have a conversation with you, but you know, the fallback could be, we can put that LARA trail connector down as our next consolidation project. But I just, you know, I don't know, I just, I think it's disingenuous for us to do paperwork just to do paperwork, to receive money.
Right.
And maybe I'm being too blunt about that.
I'd like to get the money without paperwork.
Yeah, I'd love to get the money without paperwork, that's not gonna happen. But the thing is that, you know, the, I know the, at least the legislators that I talked to, the intent was, there wasn't a lot of cooperation, there wasn't a lot of talk out there among local units of government, and so they wanted to, and this really was something driven by the governor, they wanted to basically force us to talk. Well, Lowell's not like that. I mean, we've already been talking, and we actually even stepped up our efforts and, you know, put together this alliance of the two townships in the city and school district in the chamber, and like I said, we are light-years ahead of many other areas of the state. And it just, you know, again, I've said it twice, I've said it three times, it seems disingenuous to just throw something down on paper. I'd rather really talk about what we are doing, because we are doing great things.
But if we don't meet that criteria, if they say, no, we want a project, you don't have a project, are they gonna do that? I mean, should we?
I think actually that input, the LARA, or participating with LARA and trying to find the trail connector, that would be, that would be something we.
That would be something like they, but you know, something just so you don't miss that criteria, and they go, oh, sorry.
Right, and that's what I don't want to do, and that's part of why we're having a discussion is, and I'm gonna talk with Treasury about this.
Yeah. I mean, it's obvious we're probably doing a lot more than other communities, but you know how they are, they want certain, fill in the blanks, and if you miss that blank, it doesn't matter if it makes sense or not, they want something in that space.
Right, exactly.
So I think the trails is a good idea, Jim.
Yeah, it is.
I'm agreeing with your approach, too.
Thank you for that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to.
Hold on, I'm not.
Excuse me. There are.
There, there's, oh, wait, there's more. We have a couple of promotions in the police department and I'd like Chief Dukele to talk to you about those.
Good evening. I'd like the two gentlemen in the back to come up to the podium, please. Over the past couple of months, we've had quite a few changes in the police department. We had Chief Gadsden retire. He promoted me to chief of police, which left a couple of vacancies within the police department. Also Officer Caicis ended up going to the Kentwood Police Department. During this time, I apologize, I had the flu at the last council meeting. I was going to make one of these announcements back then. Dustin Brown is on the left. He grew up in Grand Rapids, was a part-time officer with the Lowell Police Department over the past year and a half. He completed his studies from Grand Rapids Community College and he started attending Ferris State University. He plans to finish his bachelor's degree in the near future. He's currently married to his wife Jaclyn and they have a nine-month-old baby girl named Piper. During a hiring process, Dustin rose to the top and he was our choice to be the next full-time officer at the city of Lowell and he is currently assigned to the night shift. So I'd like to take this time to welcome Dustin. Next to him is a gentleman that I've had the pleasure of working with for the last 18 years and that is Sergeant Chris Hurst. He graduated from Reed City High School in 1983. During that time, he was also a member of the Michigan Army National Guard and he held the rank of platoon sergeant and included deployments to Panama and Latvia. And he retired as the platoon sergeant after 20 years of service with an honorable discharge. He has also been a medic for Rockford Ambulance and has attended Edmond Ford College for his medical licenses. He is currently the Lowell Police Department's firearms and weapons instructor. He's also a field training officer, which was pointed out by the hiring committee that I had. He said Chris is a, not only a teacher, but a father figure for a young department. He will tell you he's old, but he is very young at heart. During his off time, he also works as a firearms instructor with Jim Figer, former council member. He is married to his wife Kristin for 27 years and he has four children. He has lots of outdoor hobbies and he had volunteered to actually stay on the night shift so that we could have a supervisor on nights. So I'd like to take this time to congratulate Sergeant Chris Hurst on his recent promotion to sergeant in the Lowell Police Department. I want to say, you know.
Oh, no, I think we can hear from Sergeant Chris. Thank you, chief, and congratulations, gentlemen, on your promotions. The other thing that I asked Mark Muntt with men whether, whether or not, he did submit an annual report, I think those were your packets. There are a couple of highlights in there. We're always talking about Lowell. I've got a chart that I'm going to put up on, on the screen as well. But Mark has agreed to come up and maybe just give a few highlights of the annual report for wastewater treatment plant. Mark, how's it going?
We're 24 hours in, so I can do this by it.
I think it was 36.
Yeah. We closed another year, 2013, probably the most memorable one year in my career for a lot of reasons, both good and challenging. Good was operations professional year for me. From the Michigan Water and Fire Association, good was being recognized and written up in the National Day Magazine, which means a lot to me, but not a lot to you because you're going to get wastewater magazines. Challenging though was the flood, obviously. Wasn't a record flood, well, depends on, the River Gate had a record reading, but I want to clarify that we've had worse floods in Lowell and we need to keep that in forefront of our minds, that we've seen worse and have the potential to see worse again. But for the plant itself, record flows for daily flow, record monthly average flow, record flow per month. It was, it was an interesting time, a challenging time. Bodied to work was, was different. Certainly one of the record books. Used to, the worst we ever had prior to this was take the big yellow taxi cab, also known as a dump truck, but we went to a whole other level this year. We pumped 514 million gallons of water through the plant for the year. That is not a record despite having record times in April. We take April, May, and June out of the equation, we would have averaged exactly what we averaged last year. April, May, and June were interesting. The graph, I think, tells the story and I was going away when I, after I put all the data into the spreadsheet and I go to the tab and said graph and I saw that and I said, wow. You know, that is, that's wild. You can see at the beginning of the year, we went, there's two lines going horizontally across the pages, a green one, a red one. They're almost right on top of each other. The green one's the average daily flow for the year, 1.41 million gallons. The red one is the design flow for the plant, which is 1.42 million gallons. So we were almost at design flow for the year. We went above that a few times in February and March and then April came and boy, oh boy, it looks like Mount Vesuvius. It went up and stayed up and it stayed up for a very long time. We did not consistently stay below design flow until July. That's how long it took for the ground to dry out. You know, I was planting my garden three weeks after the flood went down, standing where water was five feet deep three weeks prior to that, but there was still a ton of water in the ground and it took that long for it to find its way out to wherever, some of it went down the sanitary sewer, obviously, but to the creeks and the rivers and dipped down to normal flows. So it was a fun year. I'm not sure I want to repeat it again in my career. Speaking of which, this next summer in July, I'll, I'll celebrate my 25th anniversary with the city of Lowell, which is pretty cool. That'll be 37 years in the business. There's only a few things in my life I think I'll be able to say that I've done for 50 years other than live. Probably the only one I'll actually achieve because I, as much as I like working here, I don't think I'm going to make 50 years. But I will be married to my wife probably for 50 years someday. If she'll be able to meet that one. Other things worth noting, chloroseptic did bring their pre-treatment system online this summer and it's been working fantastically. I guess I'm a little surprised because I wasn't sure you could separate water from septic that easily and they're doing a wonderful job. They're giving us almost drinking water quality and they, they are not giving us any challenges at all, which is good. That's all I have. There's comments from the council.
So is it all done?
It is done. Isn't that so, Chris?
That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight and for the last 24 years. That's great. I enjoyed it a lot. I look forward to a few more. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Thanks for your excellent work.
And that is all.
Thanks. And moving on to appointments, we still have a couple of openings yet, one on the Arbor Board, one on the Planning Commission. I am in discussion with the person who's interested, perhaps the Planning Commission hasn't quite decided, but stage on, we're looking at that. So Arbor Board and Planning Commission. Is that?
I move that we go into closed session as allowed under the open meeting acts to discuss union negotiations.
One second.
Consecutively to go into a closed session. For this, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Schwab?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
No.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Good. Thank you. Seven o'clock. Good evening. We'll call this it.